So Robert, you're on 112, 118, 120, 126, 127, and 131.
Hello, my name is Robert Riff. I'm from Massapepo, New York. I just have a couple of questions regarding this resolution. Can I understand?
I'm sorry, Robert. Which one are we talking about?
Oh, 112, I'm sorry.
Okay, 112.
Okay, I just want to get, I know Mr. Meyer just touched on it, but I just wanted to get, in my head, straight, exactly the difference between a requirement contract and a bid contract. And actually, there's a story that came out yesterday in paper, and NASA County is now reviewing some of their requirement contracts, but in my, from my limited knowledge, I understand like a requirement contract to be a contract that would be used for like a repeated service. For instance, if the town had a requirement contract for fences, which they do, and let's say the fence at Burns Park, there was an accident, like on Merritt Road, and a car went up and knocked a piece of fence down. Well, then, we would use the requirement people to repair that piece of fence. Is that what like a requirement contract would be about? Like, for instance, if we use so much toilet paper every year, we're not going to rebid the contracts. But what I, what I'm a little confused about is, just because a company has a requirement contract for fences, that wouldn't mean that if we built another park, like say, the Field of Dreams, that that automatically gave that company the right to do all the fences in that park, right? That would be bid out, right?
Yeah, I'm trying not to interrupt you, but I don't know if it's quite as simple as you may be. First of all, I don't know the toilet paper, I'm not trying to be funny.
Right.
I don't know the toilet paper is a subject of a requirement contract.
Just a bad example, I guess.
Well, yeah, when you purchase a product, it's a straight bid, I would assume. Also, don't lose sight of the fact that requirement contracts are bid. I think there's a, sometimes there's a lack of understanding that requirement contracts aren't subject to bidding. They are bid in the first instance, and then depending on a case-by-case basis, as the need arises.
Steven, I'm not going to.
Yeah, the, yeah, the experts, so to speak, the bureaucrats, the department, the consultants, will make determinations as to what's the best way to approach a project. I think the example you gave, by the way, about, I would, it would be my instinct that if a car ran off on Merritt Road and hit a fence at Burns Park, yeah, I think, excuse me, something like that would lend itself to, you know, it's a quick fix, just like we said before, with the amount of questions. But I don't know that there, I don't know that you can pigeonhole everything into what is a, what is a requirement contract, best use, not use, when should you go, when should you become project-specific on a certain bid. So I don't know that you can just sum that all up.
Okay.
With one general rule.
Getting right into this particular resolution, I noticed that we're using Nelson and Pope and we spoke with them last meeting specifically in regards to their work in Burns Park. And I was able to get a little bit more information regarding Nelson and Pope, okay? And what I'm coming to understand is that it was a contract bid to do Bullfield and Burns Park, and Nelson and Pope.
Because in the construction, what would be necessary, it would detract from the historical nature of the structures, trying to put a modern energy system into an old building. Therefore, the grant ultimately was not approved for that purpose. But the town said, that being the case, that we can't use it in the month for that purpose, how do we use it for something else? And the grantor said yes, and they approved a different program, which had to do with modernizing, I think it was streetlights, is that?
Town lights, town light, streetlight.
Okay. Like I said, I'm just doing this.
No, you're doing fine.
Okay. And that money, round up his $2 million, was applied to that program with the, with the permission and approval of all of the relevant agencies.
Okay.
I agree with that. I read that, and it. Well, wait a minute, Robert, wait a minute, wait a minute, slow down.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I'm on Facebook. You see, the Robert Riff who appears at that podium is not always a big Robert, but who writes on Facebook. I don't follow Facebook.
No, no, let me stop you, John. No, 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 let me stop you. I'm here on my time as a citizen. I'm not getting paid to come up here, okay, like you guys are. I'm here on my time to talk about town business. If you want to talk about personal stuff, Facebook, get on Facebook, let me, let me comment on your page, and then we'll talk about personal stuff. Please do not bring, if it's not town business, you have no right bringing anything that I say up publicly, privately, whatever. It has nothing to do with what we're talking about up here today. You want to talk about Facebook, I'll sit down, you can tell everybody how, how I like to put everything that I, that I think I'm discovering out on Facebook and everything. And by the way, and I love that saying that you used, by the way, I didn't purposely mean to disrespect you or your son, Mike. I don't have anything personal against you. Believe it or not, I still like you. But I have to tell you, after the last four years of just dealing day after day and reviewing and researching everything that's going on at the Town Voice Debate, I'm going to tell you straight out, I believe this is a big pay-to-play, okay? All you have to do is look at the financial disclosures, all you have to do is look who has the jobs with the town, all you have to do is look at the contracts. Now, that's my personal opinion, okay? So that's the point that I'm trying to make when I brought you some, nothing personal.
Let me make, and let me make my point now.
Okay.
And, and don't be disrespectful, and don't interrupt me, and don't talk over me. I'd like you to do it, because I want you to get it all out on the table. First of all, when it comes to Michael, I don't know how many times he's faced the electorate, the electorate, that poor kid, but I think it's three or four times in three or four years. He doesn't have an appointed job, he's not a member of any union, he has no guarantee. He's got to face the, face the jury, so to speak, face the public being the jury, every two years, and we all know what the results have been. Some people support him, some people don't support him, some people make financial contributions, some people don't, whatever the case may be. But that's really shouldn't be the subject of any discussion or reference before the town board. You're the one who sought to make the reference. But getting back to what I was saying before, your Facebook page was about town business. I don't follow it regularly, but people do bring things to my attention. And on the subject of Littauer, you railed, I actually didn't believe my eyes when I saw it, you railed for days on end, and entry after entry after entry, how the Town of Voice Debate procured a $2 million federal grant for use at Littauer. And you went on and on and on about, I've been to the Littauer site, much like you said this morning, I didn't see any improvements, where did this money go? You made statements that, that, and you actually dained people of who you believed put the money in their pockets, absconded with the money, stole the money.
No, I don't think so. You'd have to, if you're going to, if you're going to excuse me there, read what I said. Print it out and read to me, right? Don't just make false accusations. I come up here with documents. No, no, hold on.
Robert, I just, you're not to interrupt.
You're just talking, you're just, you're just telling stories.
I can't leave you, I can't leave you there. I read it, I know what I saw.
Okay.
What you, what you apparently, and you made complaints to the federal government, where did this $2 million go? I think you made complaints to other levels of government. By the way, you've made many complaints in the past, and all of them, to the best of my knowledge, because I have the letters, those letters, I know I have, have absolved all of the people you complained about, Led Genova, Donna Swanson, a whole lit of people. Now, you write all that stuff, and you accuse people of stealing $2 million, maybe it went into their pocket, whatever, whatever things that you said. And what you never wanted to, to figure out or understand or look into is exactly what Hal Manger said. The money was, the money was removed with the permission of the federal government from the Littauer State to the townwide lighting program.
Okay.
And yet, you go on and on and on, day after day after day, and you did the same thing with the Burns Park contract. Robert, you're in, I'm going to say you're not entitled to do it, but when you come up, when the other Robert Riff comes up to the podium and says, no, I don't want to talk about that, we can't not talk about it.
Okay.
Because the written word is just as damaging as the spoken word. And when you put things out there on the internet, in the, in the day that we live in, in the times that we live in, people read it and some will believe it. And it's totally erroneous. You should have, when these complaint results come back, you should publish the letter, saying, hey, I made a complaint about Donna Swanson, and here's the response I got, absolving her. Oh, I was wrong about.
You should publish that statement.
I was wrong, I just did.
You should make your Facebook page and publish it.
I just did, I just published it. I don't need a Facebook page. I can say whatever I have to say, looking face to face. I don't need a Facebook. You should have said at some point that, oh, you know what, oops, I was wrong. Nobody stole the $2 million. The $2 million was allocated for the townwide lighting program with the permission of the grantor, federal government. So when you come up here and you make all self-serving, conclusory allegations that, oh, this whole town is about this and it's about that, Robert, how can we, how can we accept that? When we see, you know, there's a, there's an old charge that a judge will give to every jury upon request. It's a Latin phrase, and I think it's falsus in uno. And what it says, what the judge says to the jury, if you find that any witness who came before this court during the matter on trial lied to you, even about one thing, you as a jury are entitled to dismiss everything that person says. Because if a person lies one time, they're capable of lying the second.
Good thing we're not on trial.
No, it's, I was, you made me do it.
Both sides of the fence are talking about.
Good thing we're not on trial.
Let me ask you one question.
No, no, let me finish my statement.
I'm sorry, thought you died, go ahead.
No, I'm almost done. So when you come to the board and you speak to us in conclusory, self-serving terms, without proof, and with the proof you have half the proof, or you misinterpret what you're thinking is because you want so badly to get to that conclusion, you really can't blame the board for having trouble, I don't want to say taking it seriously, because I like you. You like me, and I like you, and we like both the same, this is all good. I like you, I really do, it's not personal.
Same thing, same thing.
But when someone comes up here, when someone comes up here, based upon the record, and starts to make, again, self-serving, all conclusory statements, it's very, very hard for us to attribute credibility to them.
Okay.
And, and so that's the dilemma that we face. And you think what you think about the Town of Voice Debate, we think what we think about you, but we do like each other, which is a nice thing. So I would, we'll continue, but I'd like to do it in a gentlemanly fashion, get to the point, listen to both sides, and let's move on, because we have a lot of.
So what I want.
We have a lot of people here this morning.
Okay.
Who have legitimate town business.
I'm sorry, but I believe my business is legitimate.
I didn't say, listen, why, why are you reaching that conclusion? I'm saying these people have legitimate town business. I didn't say.
Okay, I just want to ask you a question on this, but I'm just going to put something out there to you, too. Listen, I know you'd like nothing better than to discredit me up here, okay?
No, that's not true.
Hold on, let me finish what I'm saying now, all right? Now, you make reference to complaints that I made that were, you know, nothing was found, but let's, let's let everybody know that you're the judge of those complaints, okay? Hold on a second, let me finish. Any complaints that I've made to the, to the NASA County District Attorney, or to the FBI, or maybe to the New York State Attorney, Attorney Inspector General, those are all still ongoing. There's been no, no resolution to those, okay? Complaints I've made to you, you've cleared your people. Now, just getting back to the subject at hand.
Well, I've got, before we move on, real quick, the complaints I specifically referred to, the Donna Swanson one.
You had it written down up there? You prepared?
I don't have it with me, but I can produce, I didn't have a copy of the letter absolving Donna regarding the notary stamp. Do you recall that?
The notary stamp?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's good, that's good. She, she didn't, she didn't do anything wrong on the notary stamp?
Once again, on the Facebook page, I mean, you went on for days on end, castigating her.
You know what, you, you, you purposely want to get off the subject, you want to talk about Facebook.
And you made a complaint.
But again, you're making blank statements. You don't have.
You made a complaint to the state agency, and the state agency responded in writing. Matthew, can you get the letter?
Yes, of course.
The state agency.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you acknowledged.
I acknowledged, I acknowledged a long time ago. I made a complaint about her using her notary on her own forms, and they said it was nothing wrong. Listen, I'm allowed to, I'm allowed to say I think there's something here and ask a question.
Why would you, Roger?
You know what, I know you want to talk about that.
You're raising the issue, the days on end, and slander, libeling her, faming her.
Sue me then.
Defaming a lawyer in her profession, why don't you at least have the common decency to publish the letter and say, hey, you know what, I made a complaint to the state agency, and they responded. Because I guarantee you, had the state agency responded and found wrongdoing on Donna's part, I don't even want to think about what the consequences would have.
All right, I'll take that into consideration.
I try to be fair about that.
You know what, I'll try to be fair. But getting back to this.
But you're really a good guy.
You don't want to talk about this?
And I know deep down it's why you have a certain.
Okay, well, I want to ask you about this, John. This is a pretty simple question. If you don't mind me calling you John, I'm sorry, Mr. Super.
Let me call you John.
How pointed out, and I know that, you know, the initial grant was for 2.2, and that 1.9 million got diverted to do the lighting. I understand that. I'm not saying that that grant money was absconded or anything. What I want to ask you is, okay, if the initial grant was for 2 million, and 1.9 got diverted to do lighting, why have we paid Doug Wilkie almost $1 million to date to draw plans for something that we're not going to do?
I don't know the answer to that, but how, maybe you can help. And by the way, before we, we're just going to give the answer.
Okay.
I just, as, as, aside, but like you said before, I forgot something I wanted to go over.
Okay.
The things that you write also engender reactions from other people. What you did to Paul Molinari was just absolutely vile. I, I didn't know how Paul, Paul's such a gentleman that he won't bring it up.
Oh, Paul, I spoke about it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Paul.
On the Paul account, I have.
Okay, fair enough, I didn't mean to. But you engender, like you engender, and you don't remove them.
Sorry, I stepped in my shirt, so.
Yeah, no, no, take your shirt off.
The back of your shirt.
It was really hot. And you, and you engender, you engender certain reactions from other people. Because if, for example, on Littauer, when you gave out all that wrong information, a lot of people get fired up.
I don't think I knew anything of wrong.
No, no, hold on. A lot of people get fired up, and they start writing because they think what you're saying is true. Now, I have, my, my wife, for example, has to read a comment from a, I think, a town resident that says, hey, Vendito, if you say that one more time, I'm gonna, what was it, wipe the smile off my face? Or step on me, or whatever the word was, urinate on me, whatever you expect.
You said it.
It's terrible, and you left it on your Facebook page.
I didn't even know it was on there. I can tell you something, John. I can tell you something. I post some stuff on there, and then I don't read it, I don't go over and read it, read it, read it. People post it everywhere.
It makes me, it makes me, it makes me feel better, because I do like you, and I want to aspire credibility to you. So I will accept that answer. But I will ask you a second thing now. Look at some of the comments that the things you post engender. And when you see somebody saying, hey, Vendito, if you say that again, I'm gonna wipe the floor with you, or whatever they're gonna say. Take a comment like that off. I don't think it should.
You're, you're asking me to, right?
I'm asking.
You're asking, you're asking as a favor, you're asking me to do that, right?
I'm asking you, I'm asking you as a matter of common reason.
Okay, I'll consider it.
Because I do believe that I am a decent guy.
Okay, I'll consider it. I'll consider it. I mean, I might have a problem with the First Amendment thing there, but I'll consider it.
No, 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 I, listen, the First Amendment, we all know. I don't think the First Amendment says, I think I'm gonna go hurt that man because he did something. You know, commenting about public officials is fair game. Nobody up here has a thin skin. You've been coming up here for a year, we've been allowing you to pretty much say whatever you want, and nobody says, oh, Robert, oh, you're hurting my feelings. But I think when you start, you threaten people.
I'm not threatening anyone.
No, you, I didn't say.
Well, I can't be responsible for the world, John. I mean, that's like holding, that's like holding the editor of the Daily News responsible for people writing to this.
No, it's not. You're not responsible for the Daily News, or the world, but you are responsible for the contents of your Facebook page. And I'll accept the fact, I don't know these things are appearing there, but I would hope that you'll start to pay attention to them. And when you see somebody calling elected officials a skank.
I don't think that, I don't think anybody, I would never allow, listen, listen, I don't believe, and, and please, if you're going to accuse me of somebody's, hold on a second. You just brought the word skank up, right? You're going to say that, that I allowed someone to term someone a skank, okay?
I didn't, I didn't.
And to put it, listen, that's, that's, you, you brought the word skank up. If you're going to make these accusations about my page, do me a favor, print it out and show me what you're talking about.
We'll do that, we'll do that. Thank you. You, you're getting sensitive, you talk about.
No, you're getting, you want to talk about Facebook, you don't want to talk about town business.
But I haven't once said, this is town business. I haven't once, I haven't once said to you that you didn't actively did any of these things, and I'm even accepting your explanation that you don't know what happened.
I don't have an explanation.
All I'm saying to you is, the next time someone makes a threat against an elected official, or the next time someone calls an elected official words like skank, somebody help me out, one the other, boo, what else? And some of them I don't want to repeat.
Referring to the male town, the wives of the town.
Oh, referring to the wives of the male town board members, that, or.
Listen, I, I don't know about that, and I wouldn't stand for that.
I didn't say you would. All I'm asking you is to be more mindful.
Okay.
That the things you engender, that you engender things when you write the material that you write on the Facebook page, and take a look at what they're, they're saying. I know a god, because you're a former cop, you're a former police officer.
You know that.
I think, of course, I said you're a former cop. You of all people, you of all people should, should say, wow, that's just right, that I shouldn't allow, that I'm tolerating this on my Facebook. So it's a joke.
I sympathize, I'm sorry, but in the interest of the Facebook discussion, you did post a picture of myself and my minor son, and stated that we were having a private pumpkin picking session at Littauer Farm. I want you to know that that picture wasn't taken at Littauer Farm, it was taken at Sioset Woodbury Community Park with about 2,500 people during the town's fall festival. And that is something that you specifically did, you specifically posted. And I think it was the wrong thing to do. And when we're talking about when you find out that something is wrong, I think you should take responsibility for that.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up, because one of your friends private messaged me and asked me to take it down, and I did, okay?
Why did you post a picture of a child?
Listen, well, why do you have pictures of Little League players? Stop, stop with that, John. Don't, don't go that route, all right? Don't embarrass.
I can understand why you want to go that route.
So, so, one of your friends called, private messaged me and asked me to take it down, and I did. But at the same time, somebody, yourself or your husband, made a complaint to Facebook, and they removed it also. But then Facebook reviewed it and put it back up. I didn't put it back up.
It was.
Okay, so if you like, if you like, I'll take it down when I go home, okay?
Yes, I would like. I do not, let me be very, very clear. I do not want you posting pictures of my eight-year-old son on Facebook. Can I be any clearer than that?
So how could I even know he was your son? He wasn't identified in photographs, you, your husband, and your son.
Okay, I tell you why.
I mean, we're talking about, I mean, how do we go from resolutions to talking about Facebook?
Because you talk about them all.
Because you brought up Facebook, because you wanted to burn everything to talk about Facebook. I mean, I see a question about the split.
I brought it up because the things that are on Facebook are on the three subjects.
Listen, I have the purchase contract.
It can't be two people. It can't be the Robert Riff.
Yes, you can.
It can be whoever I am. This is the road to going to the Robert Riff, remember? No, no, I'm saying, you, you could be five people, but you have to answer for all five.
That's right, that's right, absolutely. All right, go ahead.
Okay.
So I just wanted to ask you, I obtained this resolution, it's the precious, precious resolution for the Littauer State.
No.
And there's a number of different items that they touch on here, but one strikes me as kind of important. It has to do with public health and safety, all right? So what it says is, excuse me for a second. What it says is, "The acquisition and preservation of the subject property under the proposed action will provide a general benefit with respect to the public health and safety as compared to the potential future development of the site. The ESA investigations which were undertaken as part of the town's due diligence activities for the proposed land acquisition revealed a number of recognized environmental conditions which should be properly addressed in order to ensure the protection of public health and safety. There is a large amount of asbestos-containing material in the main house and a small quantity in the cottage. Much of this material is in poor condition and would have to be removed before the buildings could be occupied under town ownership. This work should be preceded by a comprehensive survey to determine more precise the full extent of asbestos in the onsite buildings and to formulate a suitable plan. Because of the age of the buildings of the subjected location, it is suspected that lead is present in the undercoat of paint throughout these structures. Although the FISA investigation revealed that painted surfaces generally are in good condition, some areas of peeling or of chipped paint were observed. A comprehensive survey should be undertaken to evaluate the condition of painted surfaces throughout the site and to identify areas where repainting should occur before the buildings are occupied under the town ownership, especially if the ultimate use entails activities for small children." Okay? Now, what I find really interesting about that is that in order to purchase the property, then, the town had to do Town of Voice Debate, Department of Environmental Resources, Division of Environmental Quality Review. This is the ESA, the quality review. Now, the interesting thing about the review is, it reads, "The 14.67 acre parcel comprising the southern half of the overall Littauer State, which contains the house, pond, and accessory structures, will not be retained." The town, to the best of my knowledge, from the documents that I'm reading, you did an EVA resources approval, but after the, after the resolution, explained to everyone that there was asbestos and contaminated material, instead of dealing with that, what you did is you just decided to take that part of the deal out of your review, okay? What we're talking about in the review here, it says a clear out, "The property proposed for acquisition comprises an 8.55 acre parcel encompassing two small ponds and the surrounding upland at the north end of the overall 25.29 acre Littauer State. The 2.7 acres comprising the former orchard parcel in the west portion of the site. Specifically, the 14.67 parcel, which contains the house, pond, and accessory structures, will be retained in private ownership and is not part of the proposed acquisition." So how did we even buy this place? I mean, is there another, was there another review done that I don't know about? Was all this asbestos and lead paint, was this all handled before we started making offices in the building?
What's in there? I don't have a report.
This is a resolution 555 from 2007. This is the purchase resolution, and the report is dated June 26, 2007. And it, I'm sorry, let me, let me make sure I have the right report, I'm sorry. It looks like June 16, 2006, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. And Steve, I got a signature on here for you, maybe.
You're not, you're not, okay, I'm all right.
No. Well, obviously, there was some hazardous, I mean, I hate to use that word hazardous, so literally, but obviously, there was some asbestos and lead paint in this building that needed to be dealt with. And apparently, it wasn't even, I mean, why would we deal with it? It wasn't even reported to anybody. We decided not to, not to include that.
Well, let's find out. John, you'll do the same thing to me on, than you did for John Burns Bar.
I'd also like to know, out of the 500, there's 569,785 dollars that was so far paid. There's a whole list of the work that Doug Wilkie and his, his people supposedly did. And then, there's another contract that is mentioned in emails through the federal government in regards to the 2.2 million dollar grant, which explains that Mr. Wilkie was also awarded the contract for $433,000 to do this.
To get the grant and process it as far as to, as I alluded to before, wasn't easy with the historical preservation requirement. But that money was spent under that grant, which may, I'm, if it was originally 2.2 million, and you wound up getting 1.9 for the other program, that would suggest that what Wilkie's firm was paying under that grant was the difference of approximately 300,000. But that's off the top of my head.
Well, let's find out.
Get the actual numbers.
We'll find out.
I also, as John Elsworth, don't recall in great detail the whole sequence of events, but I, but I suspect, believe, that much of the money that Wilkie's firm had to do with addressing the kinds of things that Mr. Riff just talked about, to correct or address, maybe is a better term, some of the things that needed to be changed in order to move the property to be suitable for public use.
Okay. We don't have to speculate. I have everything right here in front of me. I have all the resolutions. I'll tell you exactly what Wilkie was paying.
With all due respect.
Well, wouldn't you like to know how we paid Wilkie 569,000 dollars?
Robert, Robert, our records will tell us. We don't need you to tell us.
So before we, before we move on, I just want to make sure I have this straight. We got, we got a grant for 2.2 million, we diverted 1.9 to do lighting, and then we paid Doug Wilkie almost $1 million to design something that we're never going to build.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we know, I don't think we know if that's a fact yet. Much like we kind of correct the Burns Park record, we'll correct this record as well.
I guess I'll, I'll move on, it's okay. Go ahead. Our last one is 131. This is a resolution to re.
No, I can read.
Okay, thanks. This is a resolution here to adopt the requirement contract for Call Elizurin's son's pay. All right? This is a company, they, listen, they have a long time business with the town, with the county, but nobody's fooling anyone. This is a company that, that has going back ties to organized crime, okay? This is the company that Fred Alito was consulting for when he was paid the $2 million that, that he ultimately pled guilty for not paying tax on. This is a company that the town has already sued for subpar work in the past, right? I, I can't even believe that you have a resolution to do business with this company anymore. It's my opinion that we should cease doing business with Call Elizurin's son. That's all I have to say about 131. That's all I have to say about 131.
Thank you, Mr. Rip.
All right, thanks, Mr. Nakim. Thank you very much, uh, board members. We appreciate it. Hey, thanks a lot, Lee.
What's up, there's my... Hello. Very good.
Really glad that the livestream's up. It's really...
It's nice.
And when we get it together that people that can't take out time out of work now to watch it, but they can watch it here tonight, it's going to be great for the town.
Excellent. Robert, we really do stuff a lot of times.
We're going to make this real quick.
We have to, we have to.
Although I have to say to you, you know, I do take my own time to come up here. Okay, I'm not, again, I'm not getting paid. I think, I think what I'm bringing up is important.
No, no, it's just...
I'm going to rush through it, but I just want to tell you, I don't appreciate being rushed.
Wait, hold on for a minute. Hold on for a minute. We spent well over an hour with you this morning. We have a lot of other people in the audience who really, you know, endured, sat through it, because they have business with us too. So I want you to, I understand you come here. You come here every board meeting we engage you. But I do, from time to time, have to ask you, we do have, we are running a town here of 300,000 people. So time is precious. So we're getting late. So I'm going to ask you to move on, that's all.
Okay, we'll get right to it.
Let's go.
Uh, I recently got a mailing, yes, everybody did, this mailing here. I was interested in on the front page, "Council and Militia Announces Drive for More Open Government." I'm just going to jump right to my FOIL request. I really think it's ridiculous. You know, you made some statements back in, back in January to me what, how you were going to handle the FOIL request that withheld, that, that wasn't even, didn't even get responses to. They weren't, they weren't addressed in accordance with rules or regulations at all. They were, the majority of them were just blanketly, just ignored. Okay? As per your instructions, I met with you at the Town of Oyster. I've called them the last nine or 10 days in a row. I just want to understand. I'm not speaking about any further FOIL requests that I might put in. I want to, I want, like you said earlier, I'd like to, to give kudos to the Town Clerk's office. They've been responding to my FOIL requests and, and doing their job, and I really appreciate it. But I want to ask you personally, because the decision is yours on those outstanding requests. Are you ever going to give them to me? Or are you just going to keep ignoring me?
No, the decision is not mine, and I'll look into it. I really don't know where they're at. The decision is, uh, you know, really done by council as to whether or not something is FOIL-able. I don't make those decisions. But I will urge them to comply with the matters that are, that they should comply with.
Without being redundant and being argumentative, I'm just going to suggest that you go back to the January 5th. Go on my YouTube, my YouTube page, Town of Oyster Debate Corruption Exposed, and look at the January 5th meeting, and you'll see exactly what you said to me. Thank you. I just want to, moving on...
I just doubt, seriously, I said if it's not FOIL-able, it's okay. But I'll go back, we'll go back in a second.
Thank you.
But I don't decide those issues, Rob. That's why we have the lawyers.
All right.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just moving on to the, uh, the town's, um, outside counsel and the SRB. SRB, uh, whatever, scheme, incident, whatever you want to call it. What I just want to make clear in my mind is, we're paying upwards to a million dollars, I'm not sure, for a law firm under the pretense that we may be subject to litigation sometime. What I'd like to know is, is that law firm working strictly to represent the municipality of the Town of Oyster Bay? Or are there employees that the law firm is working with? Are there possible employees that may be questioned? That may be involved in it? And the reason I'm bringing it up is, I've noticed that the town has implemented Public Offices Law Section 18, which is the indemnification process. You also have your own code. It's a very lengthy code. The bottom line is, if there are employees involved, the town attorney is supposed to be representing them. If there's a conflict of interest, the town attorney writes a motion to court, and they decide whether the people... If there's a conflict of interest that the town attorney can't make that decision, excuse me, then you're supposed to go to court and get the decision. Ultimately, what I'd like to ask you is, listen, nobody, for maybe very few residents, I have no idea what's happening with the litigation or the possible litigation. Might turn out that we might have spent a million dollars and that it needed. But the point is, I think all the residents would be a little bit more at ease if in this particular case, I mentioned earlier that you don't have an ethics board, but I happen to have an opinion from the New York State Attorney General in a similar case. And what I would request that the town does is write to the New York State Attorney General requesting an advisory opinion on how to proceed with this possible litigation. They'll give you it, they'll get, they'll let you know whether you should be spending taxpayer money because something might happen, whether these people that are involved should be indemnified. Okay? Or whether, or whether outside counsel should be required. And I just think in fairness to all the residents of Oyster Bay, I mean, it's very tough. You know, I, by all means, don't, don't misrepresent me. I'm not insinuating that the board is not moving forward in the best interests of the town. But, but there's just such a lack of transparency in what's happening. Nobody knows. All, 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 all anybody knows, at least all I know, is what's happening is we're just paying more money, more money because we might get sued. I, I'd like, I'd like to ask you to request an advisory opinion from the Attorney General. And then, uh, if, if we can publish that, then the average resident can understand what's happening.
Well, we'll take you under advisement. Just with the proviso, though, Robert, which I, I don't always, and when I talk to Bob Friar, I don't have said this in the past, but it just seems to get overlooked. When an incident of this magnitude, and we'll call it the SRB incident. How's that sound? Is that what you want? I apologize. No, no need to apologize. It's not a question. An incident of this magnitude in a township of this size is... I, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say it's catastrophic. It is catastrophic. And it sets in motion forces that, you know, I don't think I even would have foreseen in terms of the fallout that occurs when, when, again, an incident of this, this magnitude takes place. It is really devastating, absolutely devastating. And I know that there is a hunger, a thirst for information. I get it. And many times, I hit my own tongue because I want to speculate, I want to conjecture, I want to say what's on my mind. But protecting the town and its treasury, protecting the residents of this town and its treasury is really the greater, the greater good. And even if it comes at a political cost or whatever the fallout is, I think the highest duty that we have is to, is the welfare of the town, its residents, and of course, its treasury. It has been one heck of an experience, I must say. But I just need, and again, pursuant to advice of counsel, and really, uh, pretty much now, it seems pretty obvious to me too that we have to ride this out. There are still issues to be resolved. And it's not just a possibility, literally. Things happen in the interim that you may not even be aware of. Things may be happening right now that we're not... I mean, if you read the history here, you saw that after the initial arrest, I guess, back in September, there was yet another occurrence. The one I referred to didn't involve Town of Oyster today. But there's still looms out there, things we may not even be aware of. An incident like this sets in motion just a chain of events that is just mind-boggling. And we're still, I think we're still trying to unravel a lot of it. So, again, for the greater good to protect the town and the treasury, I think we need to continue on the course that we've been on. But I will, we'll take under advisement, seeking the advisory opinion, although I'm not really quite sure what we'd be asking the Attorney General.
Well, I, I would, my, my question would be, is it permissible for us to spend all this money, number one, on possible litigation? Okay? There's nobody being sued at this point. There's nobody criminally charged from the town.
Yeah, but I just got to explain...
I'm just asking you. You said what you would ask, this is what I would ask to the AG. And my second question would be, you know, if, I mean, you know better than I do what you're preparing for. So if there is, I should mean, specific employees that may be involved, then we, you're asking the AG for advice on whether these employees should be covered by outside counsel or whether they should fall in the indemnification process, which is the way that, if they were involved in something work-wise. There's a lot of questions. Nobody, you know, one of the issues is, nobody really knows what you're, what you're preparing for because there's been no information. So...
I don't want to, I don't want to alarm you, but I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know if it's totally clear what I'm preparing for. See, that's part, I think I said that before. I don't want to keep repeating it. There is, it's still unfolding. There are still ramifications occurring from some of the behavior that we, that we are aware of. Everybody saw the indictment. Everybody is aware of what happened. And there are still shockwaves. So I don't know, but all I know is we think very, very, it's very, very important whether or not litigation sues if there are interests that the town has already that need to be protected in light of what's been done here. So, um, but we'll take it under advisement.
Okay. Um, just, just touching on your, your remark of, uh, governing the treasury and everything. You know, I, I've heard from a number of people that they've called the Parks Department requesting they want to know when the RRP is going to come out for the concessions. Okay? They told me. I don't know how else to say it, so like everything else, I'm just going to tell you the truth. The people are afraid to come up because they feel that they'll get blackballed if they come up and they say, we want the, you know, when's it going to come out? So my point, my point is that there seems to be some concern that, I mean, you just mentioned it, that from their position at least, I mean, I'm not in the concession business, but these people are. They seem to think that the time is running out, that, that we might wind up in a position where the town, the town's only choice is going to be to go with the people out of there because they know Wilkie don't have to do it. I would like to know, I know that there was a group that you explained that had no horrendous-saying relation or interest to, that was proposing a possible deal to the town a couple of months ago. But we haven't heard anything else about that to date. Have they made their pitch? Have, have you guys heard what they're talking about?
There's still no proposal.
Okay.
But, but something you said is confusing to me because I don't know who these people are and fear of being blackballed, but they really need not fear of being blackballed. I'm looking at the commissioner. Who earlier indicated that we have ample time to get ready for the beaches. And I, to the best of my knowledge, quite a number of people have come forward asking to be part of the RRP process. And they're certainly welcome to be. We want the best deal we can get. I don't know, Frank, am I misstating anything?
Supervisor, we've got many groups. Each one has been told.
But Rob seems to be saying that there are people going to him without coming to the Town of Oyster.
I've spoken probably to many people. In fact, their names are in a file. Okay? They've asked a lot of different types of questions. And I said to them, when the decision is made, what, you know, we will give their names to, number one, who the concession ear is. But some of their answered questions were, I want a piece of this, I want it.
Okay.
And so we, we, each one has been answered. I got a file of every single one of them that called me, and they've been sent to the town.
Well, if anyone feels that they're being blackballed, Frank, you want to...
Okay, I'm not, please don't misunderstand. I'm not saying they're coming to me before they're going to the town. I'm just saying that a couple of people came to me and asked me to bring this to your attention because they went to the town and they felt that they were getting, they weren't getting adequate answers. And they're afraid to, whatever. But it's not me, I just, Richard did, and we got the answer.
Direct it to the commissioner, now.
Okay. Um, listen, I just want to ask you, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, what are we waiting for? To terminate the SRB contracts and move on? I, I recall, I got some information here. And I recall a conversation, again, it was videotaped. I recall, I got some information here, and I recall a conversation, again, it was videotaped, it was, this was back, I think in October, October 21st, where you were questioning capital improvements, and Mr. Meyer came up and, actually, this went on for two meetings in a row. The initial meeting, he explained how the HVAC system was a capital improvement, the electrical system was a capital improvement. And then it turned out that the town provided that, the HVAC and the electrical system, I'm talking about the golf course, the Woodbury Golf Course. So, Mr. Meyer explained that he didn't mean that, that SRB actually paid for that stuff, he was just using that as an, as an example. But I obtained this resolution, it's Resolution 507 from 200, from 2007.
Well, we're kinda going over a lot of them.
No, we're not, this is brand new, you've never heard this before.
I gotta ask you to move on, this is...
Okay, I'm sure you don't wanna hear this, okay?
I hope you're wise, though.
But listen, just let me say what I have to say, I'm entitled to say, this is very important.
You are entitled to say, but also entitled to restrict your time, because we have a lot of...
So I'll, I'll make it very fast. Listen, the resolution of the Town Board is required to settle breach of contract claims. The above referenced claims arise from alleged breaches of contract. In April 2005, the town entered an agreement with the concessionist PR convention Catering Corporation for the operation of the food and beverage concession at the Town of Oyster Bay Golf Course, Woodbury, New York. Likewise, in April 2005, the town also entered an agreement with set companies as the SRB Concession Corporation for the food and beverage concessions at the Town of Oyster Bay Beach, Massapee, New York. And Claim Number 06009, so what happened is horrendous saying, SRB, they didn't sue the town, but they made two notices of claim, okay? Claim number, which as you know, is the first step when you're gonna take a legal proceeding, you have to file notice of claim. So in Claim Number 06099, the claimant, which is SRB, alleges that the town breaches contractual obligations as to the HVAC and sprinkler systems at the facility of the Oyster Bay Golf Course. As a result, claimant asserts that it suffered monetary damages substantiated by documentation in the amount of $362,7172 for the repair of this pre-systems and equipment, as well as a loss of revenue from canceled events. And in the second claim, Claim Number 06100, the claimant alleges that the town breached the agreement by terminating a portion of the use of the facility at Topey Beach. As a result, the claimant suffered monetary damages substantiated by documentation in the amount of $460,811 in the nature of capital improvements to conduct terminated use of the facility and lost profits. After extensive settlement negotiations, the town's special counsel, Syenrick and Kusikoff, advised that the first matter can be settled for $188,641.29, and the second claim for $207,332.41. This was prepared by Frank Scloraro. So, I'm a little bit confused about it, if, if, if SRB took over the concessions, the woodlands specifically, and they had an issue with the HVAC and the, and the electric equipment that they had to do $300,000 worth of work with, then they sued the town, or they didn't sue, they put in a notice of claim, evidently the town reviewed the documentation, felt that it was fair, and settled for whatever it was, $181,000 or whatever. I'm just confused how, why did the town then have to replace the air conditioning and the electrical in that, in that building? Do you know?
No, I don't know.
I mean, you seemed did it, we paid him because he did it, and then we did it again.
I know, but you were asking me a question I, I don't have any familiarity with, if you like.
Mr. Meyer knew all about it, maybe he...
Hold on, Robert, you're gonna take over the meeting?
I'm sorry, I was making a suggestion.
Be respectful, we, we talked about decency earlier, apparently you went in one ear and right out the other.
I'm extremely respectful, sir.
You're being a wise guy, you know it. Hal, do you, you mentioned you obtained your data from the gallery with this, or you wanna go into the archives? I don't want you to guess, or...
I'm not gonna guess, because unlike with everybody else we've dealt with, I think, I get the feeling after a while it isn't really an honest search for information, and genuine discussing, and trying to make best guesses as to what would have happened, but a way to track. I believe, going on recollection, Mr. Rip, obviously, we've been studying, studying this. I think, and he even alluded to it now, what we're talking about was a response to a general question, a general response to a question about what would constitute capital improvements. And I believe we, me in particular, cited HVAC systems and electrical systems as a typical example of what would constitute capital improvements. And I did recollect at that time, and I do now, that there was a problem and a controversy over those elements of that decision.
But it turned out they weren't, they weren't proper examples, did you misspeak?
No, they're proper examples of what are, of what are capital improvements.
Okay.
But apparently, in this particular instance, they were treated in a different claim process, which Mr. Rip just alluded to, and were not particular capital improvement items that were the subject of the later inquiry and financing agreement, which I think has since been researched, I don't have it today, but I believe when the question first came up, months ago, the records were searched to see what that list of capital improvements actually was, and it was, the town has it in its, in its records, I haven't memorized what they were.
So, Rob, ask Hal with questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, supervisor. Hal, well, my question is, if, if the SRB had to do this work, and then was reimbursed for it through the claim process, through, through litigation by filing notice of claim that they're gonna, you know, file an action?
It was short of litigation, you just said...
Yes, it was short of litigation, but what I'm saying is, if, if SRB, maybe I'm wrong about this, but if they did the work and they were reimbursed, why did the town then do the work again? Was the work done a second time? Did the town do a second installation of the HVAC and the electric? Because, because the reason I'm confused, I'm sorry, let me finish. The reason I'm confused is because in your statement back in October, you explained that the town did it, that it wasn't, it wasn't a capital improvement because the town did it, that same did it.
I don't remember, I don't, I didn't study what I said six months ago. I, my recollection is the question, maybe there were multiple questions as we did it to this. The question I remember addressing was what of capital improvements, and I gave a true example of things that are capital improvements, but not addressing this particular situation of what they were. There are, there is a list that has been prepared and submitted to the town, and was resubmitted after this came up some months ago, that there is a list of what those capital improvements were, I do not have them memorized or know what they were, nor do I even remember whether HVAC and electric is on that list at all.
So...
But I stand by the statement that HVAC and electric are intended capital improvements, there are many others.
I got it.
I can say the examples, but generally, generally, yeah.
Rob, as simple, in as simple terms as you can, I don't wanna go through this again, just pose your question one more time.
Okay. If, if SRB did the work to electric and HVAC, and they were reimb...
I don't know.
Okay, but they did, it's on the list.
It's ascertained, okay, so we can...
Thank you. Okay, just moving on, I just wanted to, Liberty Industrial site, and we talked about that briefly, but, you know, again, I, I, it's not that I'm bringing up the same items, it's that, you know, since the last time I saw it, a little year, a month ago, I, I came across some new information. I mean, it's not the same thing over and over. What I understand about that is, I mean, I understand that there was a judgment, 22 million, uh... From what I'm, from what I'm getting now, from what I, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, that the town purchased a portion of that site, two thirds of it, let's say, two parcels, and we were able to get that by condemning it, and then eminent domain, and then there was a major EPA movement where, where the people who were actually responsible for polluting it were primarily held, held accountable for cleaning it. But I'm a little bit confused as to why we wound up paying the 22 million dollars for the site. What I'd like to ask first is, I understand that what happened was, there was a dispute in litigation over what the value of the property was. How much were the owners, how much money did the owners want for the property? I mean, if we, if we were disputing the litigation, they had to have a number that they were looking for, what were they looking for?
Right, it isn't here right now, but I believe the advance payment is approximately in the five, six, or seven million dollar range, but we'll get confirmation if these owners are being affected.
Okay, I'm not sure what an advanced payment is, but what I'd like to know is, when, when we took it over by eminent domain before we went to court, the final payment, the whole payment, the whole nut, how much did they want for the land that they would have been happy?
He doesn't know?
No. Again, we can share from our recollection, but I want to be clear, that's what it is, is that the cost was substantially less than what the court presented. But again, we have to go back and sort of...
I'm a little confused that, that the owners of the property would only want 5 million, because, is that what you're saying, they only want 5 million?
I didn't say that the owners wanted 5 million, I said the owners, my recollection was, wanted substantially less than the court ultimately made a judgment on this.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're confusing me. We took the property, the town took the property over by eminent domain, and now what happens is, we're supposed to give them fair amount of market value for the property. The dispute is that they don't accept our version of fair market value, so how much did they want? When this started 12, 14 years ago, how much did they want for the land, that's all I'm asking. We must know, we can't be litigating, of course, without knowing what, what they wanted.
Anybody have the litigation file here, I don't have it, correct?
Supervisor, while I've said it three times, Mr. Rip apparently isn't hearing what we're saying, I said that the ultimate, I believe, and again, if we're doing this from recollection, impromptu, just wanna be very clear that it's subject to us reviewing the file. What I said was, is that I believe the advanced payment was in the five, six, or seven million dollars.
I thought it was seven, but that's right.
It answered to a specific question, I believe at the time, the group was, was willing to take more than that, but significantly less. I don't recall the 17, 18, 19, 20 million dollar range, but again, I just wanna be fair, we have to go back and quote the files at some point.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm, I got sidetracked on another issue, but my understanding is, we put down what we thought it was worth, pursuant to the appraisal, I guess, right?
That's what I was asking, what's that number?
I, I think it was in the five to seven million range, that's what we, we'll get the number for you, we don't, you know, we'll...
I said multiple times, that's what I believe, my recollection.
Then what happened was, that was not acceptable to the...
Right, what, what was that number?
I don't know what their demand was, we could probably find that out, and ultimately, and the court came down with a number that was, quite frankly, beyond bail, I thought, which we're now appealing to, and so, okay.
See, see, my point is, my point is, Mr. Supervisor, is, what I don't understand is, the EPA provided an appraisal of the property for roughly 10 million dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so what I don't get is, when all this started, instead of, we offered them five to seven, they wanted more, why didn't we give them what the EPA appraisal value was, 10 million?
We thought, I, I'm gonna make an assumption here, but let's get the answer.
Well, let me, let me finish your question.
We probably thought it was too high, we thought it was too high.
But we just got, wanna be clear, that the reason the advanced payment is very significant is that when you do that, you don't pay penalties or interest if there's a rule in...
You have to make a...
...that sets the value higher. So I'm sure some residents might have, had we given 10 million to someone, and our appraisal only said seven, the Town Board and the supervisor might have been criticized for giving 30 or 40% more than our own appraisal, that's what...
But I think that, I think that's the answer.
That sounds good.
If the good faith deposit was made based on our own appraisal?
Correct, but I wanna be clear that I think the residents would have been equally dismayed and upset potentially with the board had we given an amount 30 to 40% higher than our own appraisal.
It's not that much, it's not that much, from five to seven to 10 million is not, is not 30, 40%.
10 million is not, it's about 50%.
Okay, guys, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. The town, in order to stop interest in horse and whatever other damages that you committed, does an appraisal, tenders it about that they think it's worth. The landowner says, that's not enough, I want more. In this case, he wanted, was it 10%, or he probably wanted about 30 or 40% more.
We don't know what Mr. Rip is saying, that's what...
If his number is right, we're gonna verify it. The town said, no, that's too high, we wanna pay that, and then proceeded to litigation. And, you know, I say over and over again, there are dangers of going into more litigation that sometimes surprise you, and this one surprised us. Remember that number that the court ruled recently is really, it's, it's out of whack with any appraisal.
So the number that they've just put out, like the 22 million, that doesn't include any penalties or interest?
Uh, that I don't know, but I'm sorry, and this, does the, the number that the court fixed, does that include penalties or anything?
I'm a little confused, because didn't you just say that the reason that we did the prepayment was to avoid penalties and interest?
Right, but now I think we're talking about, on the judgment that we're talking about.
Just talking about penalties and interest on the difference, have we offered them nothing, and then litigated it? I believe the agents kept penalties would be on the difference.
The court's saying you didn't put up enough.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We got that whole stuff there too.
One last thing, one, I'm sorry, one last thing, and actually, two, I'm sorry, I gotta ask you. On, on the garbage thing, as I did a foil, and there's no, although, although Winter Brothers told me they have an agreement with the town where they don't have to do the recyclables in my neighborhood, there is no such agreement. I, I just don't understand why they're not pulling it. And the very last thing is, the town recently received $897,317 in federal grant housing grant. It's specifically, it's a HUD capital fund program, disperse the money to build, repair, and modernize public housing. I'm just wondering, do we have any plans to, for this $890,000?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
I'm not aware they have any plans for it.
Thank you very much.
The grant, the grant, I think somebody did that, we'll, we'll find out.
Thank you, thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Rob, you too, thank you.